I used to work on jobs, and then I got too lazy and too worried.
It was more.
I think it's wonderful.
Good evening, everybody. It is 6:30 on January 2024 in the District Office Boardroom. I'd like to call the Rockford Area Schools School Board Meeting to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we will start with the Board Roll Call. Last year's Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Jamie Hilstrom.
Here.
Beth Prescott.
Here.
Eric Gordy.
Here.
Amy Edwards.
Here.
Jenny Nealon.
Here.
Jessica Johnson. Everyone is present.
Excellent. And we are joined by the table by our Superintendent, Dr. Riedel Hoover, and his Assistant Courtney Tyberg. Item number two is the ceremonial oath of office. Reading quickly. It is an honor that you are elected to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath of office, you assume a tremendous responsibility as a Director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. The power puts you and the other members of our school board in a position to be both morally and legally responsible for equitable, quality education of every student in the district. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the Board with extensive participation of the community envisions the community's educational future, then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for the public schools. To achieve the vision, the Board establishes a structure that creates an environment designated to ensure all students the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because as a Board, we must be accountable to the community, we must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children. As Board members, we serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision of our schools. Furthermore, we must strive to work together with the Superintendent and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision we have created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skill and knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. Having previously signed the acceptance of office and oath of office, we hereby ask Board members to publicly affirm their commitment to the oath of office. And I'll ask that we do read this all together, please? All right, thank you.
I affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state, and I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of the school board members of an independent school district number 883, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Excellent. Thank you all so much for carrying that through. Next item on our agenda is the election, or sorry, the approval of the agenda. I would appreciate a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda.
I will make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Nealon, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. There's a first and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no need for discussion, all those in favor, by aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And the agenda carries. Next item is the election of officers of the school board. The items that we have available are Chair, Vice Chair, Clerk, and Treasurer. I would like to, as last year's Chair, I'll be Acting Chair until that time Chair is filled, and I will ask for nominations for the Office of Chair.
I'll make a nomination to, I would like to nominate Eric Gordy as Chair.
Eric Gordy has been nominated. Are there any other nominations for the Office of Chair? Are there any further nominations for Office of Chair? If there are no further nominations, the Office of Chair nominations have been closed. And since there is no other, the, I do accept, thank you very much, and that is election by acclamation. Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Next item is Office of Vice Chair. I will make a motion to ask Amy Edwards to be our Vice Chair.
I would accept that nomination.
Thank you so much. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Are there any further nominations for Office of Vice Chair? If there are no further nominations, the nomination process for Vice Chair is now closed. And since there are no other people nominated, Amy Edwards, thank you very much, by acclamation, you will be Vice Chair for this coming school year. Thank you so much. Calendar year? Thank you very much. Moving on then to Clerk. I would ask for nominations for the Office of Clerk.
I'd like to nominate Jamie Hilstrom for Clerk.
Jamie Hilstrom, do you accept the nomination for Clerk?
I accept the nomination. Can there be discussion right now? Is that allowed? I just want to make sure that, because it's not something that we talked about earlier, so I just want to make sure that nobody else is...
I can, I can explain.
Okay.
I'll explain. So my explanation is that if, this is my last year on the Board, in my term. If I do not run, we would have no experience on the Board in Clerk. And Jamie has shown a lot of interest in policy, and that's one of the big roles for Clerk. And so I thought it would be, I'm also her mentor, and I thought it'd be a great opportunity for me to mentor her through the position this next year, so that we would have somebody on the Board with the experience of Clerk, and I think she would do a wonderful job of it. So that is why.
Thank you very much. So there's a nomination for Jamie Hilstrom as Clerk. Are there any other nominations for Office of Clerk? Are there any further nominations for Office of Clerk? If there are no further nominations, the nominations for Office of Clerk are closed, and Jamie Hilstrom, by election of acclamation, you will be Clerk for the next calendar year for the Board. Thank you very much. Next office is Treasurer. I would appreciate a nomination for Treasurer.
I would like to nominate Jenny Nealon.
Jenny Nealon, if you have been nominated, would you accept the position of Treasurer?
Yes, I will.
Thank you very much. Are there any further nominations for Treasurer? Are there any further nominations for Office of Treasurer? There are no other further nominations for Office of Treasurer. The Office of Treasurer nominations are closed, and by acclamation, Jenny Nealon, thank you very much for being Treasurer. We have now filled all of the officers for this coming year's school board. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to item number five, Committee and Boards. Just need to make sure I get into my right spot.
Renewal of memberships.
Yep, renewal of memberships. My computer just didn't load my items as I like them. Now they're here. All right. All right, renewal of memberships. And if you look into your Board packet, you will see a list of memberships that the district has previously been in, and I believe they are all renewals of current memberships. I think the only difference will be a change in name?
Most likely it'll be voted on this month.
Okay, very good. And then we can just make changes. And if you do notice, there is a TBD for money, because as Dr. Riedel Hoover, would you explain the TBD on that?
Yeah, they change. Sometimes they stay the same, but sometimes they might go up by a few dollars here and there. And I think in the past, in talking to Courtney, last year's dollar figure has been inserted in there, and I said, well, we don't know if that's going to be a dollar figure, so we put a TBD on that. Most of them are going to be determined here shortly, and we'll know what they are. But I don't anticipate any big deviations from what's been the previous cost or the current cost.
Excellent. All right, now, as there are a list of there, hopefully you've had the opportunity to look through them, and I know many of you participated in there, but I would appreciate a motion to approve the memberships for the next calendar year.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Prescott. There's been a first and a second. Any further discussion?
Yep, just a request, if there is a significant change in membership dues, like more than just cost of, you know, doing business, to bring it back to the Board, since we're doing it with, you know, kind of the trust. We'll do it. Awesome. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other discussion points?
I would just, I know the to be determined is because we don't know. But just so that we can remember and not have to look back like last year's, if we could have like a what it was last year, and obviously, we're not approving it for next year, that it would be the same, but just otherwise, you gotta go back and find it, so.
I think we have that.
It would be nice to have it for next year, that it's in there somewhere, just so that we can be reminded of it.
Thank you very much. So noted, I see Courtney writing down. Thank you so much. So with that, any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, I'd appreciate a motion to approve...
We did motion.
Oh, we did motion and a second. There, we have a first and a second done. All those in favor, aye aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Board Committee Assignments. If you look at the documents that are associated to our agenda tonight, we had discussion in December where we talked about reorganizing some of our committees into representation, because they truly weren't committees and being more accurate in the statements of words. We had then discussed the desire and volunteering of being on those positions. So with those positions in front of you, does anyone have any questions, comments, or concerns about the list that's in front of you currently?
Well, the only, sorry.
Go ahead.
The only thing, just maybe for, since we talked about it, number nine, Masico, and number 10, Northwest Suburban, and number 11, the C, Emery A. Those maybe need to be moved down to the third category as a school board representative, since they're external to the district. Just a, since they're not, it's not an ad hoc committee technically. That would be my point.
That's not a within district.
And you don't vote on anything, or, I mean, you vote, you sort of vote for the...
Well, you do. You're a representative for the district when you go to those, but it's, I don't know. Just a thought.
Eighty, nine, 10, and 11?
Yeah, so it's number nine, number 10, and number 11, just to kind of flip those down as a representative.
That makes sense.
Because they're not an ad hoc of our Board. That's it for me.
Any other further clarifications on the items presented to you? No other clarifications, and I'd appreciate a motion to approve the committees and ad hoc committees as presented to you?
I'll make that motion, same Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Nealon. There's been a first and a second. Any further discussion?
Just let me look at something. Don't work, I bet.
Excellent. Seeing no need for further discussion, all those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, and everyone for volunteering to participate in those activities. Moving on, Efficient and Effective Operations, number six, Delegate Statutory Duties of Clerk to the Executive Assistant. In front of you, in front of you is an opportunity for us, by statute, we have the opportunity to delegate clerk to the district office for help maintaining Board business. I'd appreciate a motion. Signify that, please.
I'll make a motion to delegate the statutory duties of Clerk to the Executive Assistant.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hilstrom.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. There's been a first and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item, six B, Delegate Statutory Duties of Treasurer to the Business Services Office. Item is available for you. We have the opportunity to move the Treasurer's responsibility into the Business Services Office for the district. I'd appreciate a motion to approve that.
I will make a motion to delegate statutory duties of Treasurer to the school district Business Services.
Thank you, Ms. Nealon, and a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Hilstrom. There's been a first and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all those with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item is a resolution authorizing the CFO and Director of Business Services to make deposits, pay...
Is that, sorry, I was just reading that again. Is that the right title, Director of Business Services?
That is Mike's title.
It is. Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Authorize our Chief Financial Officer and Director of Business Services to make deposits, pay expenses, invest and transfer funds in the best interest of the district. This is a resolution. We'll be calling that appropriately, but I'd appreciate a motion to do that.
I'll make a motion to, that authorizes the CFO or Director of Business Services to make deposits, pay expenses, invest and transfer funds in the best interest of the district.
Excellent. There's a first by Ms. Nealon. Eric Gordy will second. As this is, any discussion?
Point of clarification.
Yes.
The title of the thing says, just the CFO and Director of Business Services. The narrative also has a superintendent in there, so I just want to make sure that the motion covers whoever should have the ability to do that.
I will never do it, but...
But just in case, and the superintendent. Excellent.
I will modify the motion.
The CFO of the Business Services Office as well as the Superintendent to cover those things. Excellent modification done, and can I, and I will then make that second as well, since there's been a first and a second. Any discussion? Thank you, Ms. Edwards, for that clarification. Seeing none, this is a resolution. Madam Clerk, would you please call?
Have you? Oh, yeah, yeah. Beth Prescott.
Aye.
Eric Gordy.
Aye.
Amy Edwards.
Aye.
Jenny Nealon.
Aye.
Jessica Johnson.
Aye.
Jamie Hilstrom, aye. Resolution passes.
Resolution passed.
Good job.
All right, let's do it again now. All right, letter 6D is a resolution authorized?
I'm just making it easy, because it's a lot of, it's a lot of stress. Because I messed up the...
I always used to do Brady, Eric, or Eric, like, I told her.
Amy, I told you, like, Amy Gordy is the one.
That's what I told her. I said, all of a sudden, you forget every name. All right.
And so as we continue to move on, the next item, Resolution Authorizing Use of Eximally Signatures. This is presented in front of you and will be a resolution. Again, I'd appreciate a motion to accept that resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Nealon. There's been a first and a second. This, any discussion? As this is a resolution, Madam Clerk, please call.
Beth Prescott.
Aye.
Eric Gordy.
Aye.
Amy Edwards.
Aye.
Jenny Nealon.
Aye.
Jessica Johnson.
Aye.
Jamie Hilstrom, aye. Resolution passes.
Resolution passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Moving on, the next action item is that compensation for the Board members. If you all recall, last year, there was quite a bit of work done by some of our Board members. Thank you very much again for the clarity and work that you have done on the compensation for Board members. I do not believe we have had much discussion, as things seem to be working out well. I will make a motion to set compensation for Board members, Eric Gordy, and can I please have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Prescott. There's been a first and a second. Any further conversation about the compensation for Board members? Seeing no need for conversation, all those in favor, by aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Compensation is approved unanimously. Designate time and place of meetings. Time and place of meetings are listed on our agenda. This is an opportunity for us to look. If you do look, most of them are Mondays. There is a location of Corcoran for April 15, as well as a couple moved because of Martin Luther King Day or President's Day. So that calendar is set in place for us right now. I'd appreciate a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Hilstrom. There's been a first by Ms. Hilstrom. A second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Prescott. It's first and second. Any further discussion? Seeing no need for other further discussion, all those in favor, signify by aye, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item is the Official Media Outlet Cover Page. If you look in here, you can see that we are choosing to make a change to the Wright County Journal Press based on cost increases that were associated from our previous, and I believe the Superintendent's Office sent us a message indicating that desire to move, and that that Wright County Journal Press does serve our district and our attendance area appropriately. With that, I would appreciate a motion to approve the Wright County Journal Press as our official media outlet.
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Nealon. There's a first and a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. There's been a first and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, by aye, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Before we move on?
Yes.
So just since we're changing our newspaper, I'm not quite for sure how long we've had forever the use of our newspaper.
Forever.
Right. So, I mean, I appreciate that this is actually quite significantly cheaper to go with the Wright County Journal Press, and this has been a part, you know, like, I want to make sure that we're communicating appropriately with our constituents, that if they do wish to look at the minutes, or whatever it may be, there's a variety of options, one being in the newspaper, the other being, of course, online, because they are published online. So I don't know how we communicate that effectively, but I just...
We could pay to put a little snippet in the cover of the paper.
We are changing our...
We encourage you to subscribe to the Wright County Journal.
Probably not, but I just, I just, you know, however we, whether it's on our landing page as like a school district on the Board, you know, like, landing page for a short period of time. You know, I mean, it is what it is, and I'm not sure how many people rely on the paper for that information, but some people may.
Well, we could, in the quarterly, just have like, for this year, in our quarterly, where it's a reminder, our new official newspaper is Wright County Journal, and have a link, QR code, whatever, so that people can subscribe if they would like.
Thank you. That's my own idea.
I totally agree with you on that, Amy.
Yeah.
Because people are, I...
Some people do.
I know the people that do subscribe. And I know that I'm going to get a call. I know who I'm getting a call from, because, you know, like, why are the minutes in there? Why can't I, you know?
Yeah.
And it's, it's a good publication, and we just don't have, you know, the wherewithal to spend twice as much to...
Publish minutes. No, understood. So thank you, also gratitude for looking to see what would be a more economic option for our district. So thank you for that. Okay.
Excellent. No, perfect. Thank you. I appreciate the lift up. Letter 6H, designate official depositories. The object in front of you is the ability to identify official depositories. As you can see, Bank West, PMA, and Associated Bank, these have not changed following since 2016. Yes, Ms. Nealon?
I recall, and if I can call upon Mike McNulty for a question?
Yes. Mr. McNulty?
Did we add Old National last year or the year before as well?
Yeah, there's never been a discussion further about it right now.
So we, we are not using them?
No.
Okay. Just wanted to double check that before we do.
I think with our CFO coming, getting her on Board with what she sees, if we move forward with the different discussion we do, but right now, there hasn't been any further.
Okay.
I don't see it right now happening.
Thank you very much for the clarification. With that, those three items are there, and I appreciate a motion.
I'll make a motion to designate our official depositories as Bank West of Rockford, PMA Securities, Inc., and Associated Bank.
Thank you very much, Ms. Nealon, and a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Hilstrom. There's been a first and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, by aye, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Legal, Office of Legal Counsel. If you look at the cover page, you can see our three legal counsel outlets available to the district. These have been the same for quite some time, and I would appreciate a motion to approve the three, to designate the official legal counsel.
I would make that motion to designate these official legal counsel.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. There's been a first. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Prescott. There's been a first and a second. Any discussion?
Question, did we, so we said Glenn Knudson and Dean back in the day?
Back in the day. I think that was removed two goes. I don't think they were on our list last year.
I don't remember. I didn't look, so. Okay, sounds good.
So we'll retain the three.
It's fine. They're small groups, so it's fine. Yes, okay.
Thank you so much for...
We added the one.
The one on the bottom. Okay, that's fine. No, makes sense.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We will move on to item 6J, which is going to be our closed session, and pursuant to Minnesota State Statute, Section 13D dot 03, we will close for negotiations strategy discussion for our teachers.
I'll make a motion to move into closed session to discuss negotiation strategies.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Second by Ms. Edwards. Any discussion? Seeing none, all goes in favor, by aye?
Aye.
All is opposed, and we will be moved to closed session at 6:55. We will take a short recess to allow the gallery to...
Geez, I have a micified...
Just don't, don't get trampled on the way out.
I don't know if I'm going to come back.
They're kicking me out.
We're just...
How long do you want to recess for, you're like...
Yeah, there's nothing after this.
All we're going to do is go over when our next meetings are, and that's it. It's just to go over, we're going to have these four meetings, and then we're going to adjourn.
Well, gee, have lots of fun.
Take care. See you later.
So do we have to switch that? Yeah, we do, like, we have to switch it.
Oh, so it's a different rigord.
And we are back in our open session at 7:30, after closed session has concluded. And the next item, I believe, is Board Updates. I had to reopen my computer, and it didn't close down, so it makes me happy. 7A, Superintendent and Announcements. Negotiations meeting Monday, January 15, 1:30. Rockford Middle School Conference Room 11. Negotiations meeting Thursday, January 18, 3:45. Rockford Middle School Conference Room 11. Work session of the Board of Education Monday, January 22, 5:30 in the District Office Boardroom, immediately after the regular meeting of the Board, January 22, 6:30 in the District Office Boardroom. And with that, I'd appreciate a motion for adjournment.
Could I add a couple of quick things here?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'm going to pass this around, so if you remember, we talked with, I think I have one for everybody, with Dan Hooverman about the Board's interest in doing a Board Handbook. And I think this is somewhat of a legacy handbook for the Board. And Dan put together a very rough draft of items that could potentially be included. What I am asking for, and not tonight, for you all to look through it and say, hey, we're missing a couple things. Let's make sure these things get included, or, boy, I don't want that included, so let's not do that. And then, the plan of action on that is then, we selected a ad hoc committee, and I, I know for sure it was Amy, and I, and Beth, you were the other one. Dan is going to work on, after you all say, hey, make sure this gets included, any key dates, any key things you want on there. I will give that to him. He's going to spend, he said, three to five hours of actually doing the work. And then he wants to meet with myself, Amy, and Beth, as the ad hoc group, to say, is anything missing? Do you want to add anything here and there? And then, that would probably be end of January, early February. He says he would like to work during the day. We could do it virtually, if we wanted to. We probably don't need to have him drive here. But then we could, at that point, bring it back to the whole group for a conversation. So if that works for everybody, that's the plan of action on that. So take some time to take a look at this and see if there's anything you want to add, subtract, edit, anything along those lines. Let me know in the next week, maybe, and then I can pass those things on to Dan while he's working on the draft of this to bring back to Amy and Beth.
Sorry, but do you want that by?
Next week? And if it takes a little longer, that's okay, because I think that Dan said end of January, early February, for the ad hoc group to get together. So if it takes a little longer, that's fine, too. So that's that. Couple of things I wanted to mention. We are going to have a presentation on the 22nd. We are gonna have a presentation on the 22nd with respect to some things that the high school wants to do with curriculum around career and tech ed. There's a lot of equipment that's there, from my understanding, that is either obsolete, no longer usable, or that they can sell. And I know that I heard, I think it was last year, there was some surprise sales of some things. And so Principal Menard and Jill Gordy are gonna come to the board meeting on the 22nd and describe what they're no longer using, and what they would like to do in its place, which, by the way, is welding. 300 welding openings right now in the metro area. They've already done a bunch of legwork to connect with different welding companies and academic things, and they've looked at some numbers. They believe they could sell the equipment they're not using, and use that to purchase some things for welding, that would make that program really viable. So they're gonna come and present on that. But they did ask, they thought it would be important if we had a couple of board members tour the area first. And because we have some folks on curriculum, and that would be Jamie and Beth, would you guys be willing to walk through the space with them and get a feel for it before they come on the 22nd?
Yes, just have them reach out to me and be on our schedule.
Okay.
Till before January 22.
Yeah, and if we can't do it before then, then you can be exposed to it, but then walk through it before we make any decisions. So. We have, according to Jim, around $8,000 to $9,000 from previous sales sitting in the account to go towards that program as well. We did talk about a communications committee, which we added here, and I have on my list, I think, is that Amy and Beth?
Yep.
I would like to set a meeting sometime soon, and maybe we have too many meetings coming up, so maybe it'll be early February. But I really want to get together and talk about what that's gonna look like, because it's time for a PR blitz on Rockford area schools. It just is. So I have ideas, and by the way, I think the person that I have in mind might have been Eric's neighbor, potentially, back in Wisconsin, Colin.
Oh, yeah.
I can't imagine two people have the same last name as that, so it might be. And so I've already talked to him about doing some PR work with us. That's gonna lead us into the proposed tech levy. So I will want to get together with Amy and Beth and work on that. But I also know that I need some help, probably with realtors, and so that's where you come in, so I'll probably be talking to you on the side as well, and anyone else who wants to throw some names at me, because it's gonna be go time pretty soon on that. And I want to make sure we're working our best foot forward to talk about our district, because there's so many great things happening. And, let's see, yep, those were the three things I had. So the one was the document from Dan, the other one is the career and tech ed stuff for Jamie and Beth, and then the communications committee with Amy and Beth, so.
So for the communication one, will you just send us some proposed times, and then...
Courtney, I'll work on that.
And then have, who would send us the times to meet?
I will connect with you guys.
Or have to...
I'll connect with you guys. I'll talk with Amy and Paul, and see when they think is a good time. Or better yet, you two could give me some dates, because we're always working during the day, so you guys can tell us what dates...
I know I'm in town next week, so I just don't know what time of the day they're thinking.
I think they're open at almost any time of day, whatever works with the two of you.
Well, it couldn't be Monday, because they want to be here.
Do you guys want to get back to me?
Yeah, I'll give you some time.
They're pretty much always free, except for the conference, which I'm assuming that will also not be free.
Oh, actually, I'm not going to that, because I have to go to Dallas now.
Well, because you're not free.
Sorry, that took up some time, but there's a few items I really wanted to get to, and I need some of you to do the work. So that's why. Oh, yeah?
Excellent.
Now you can do your motion.
Well, I'm gonna ask if there's any questions yet for Dr. Adel Hore. No? Excellent. As there are no questions, then, the last item is the hardest one to always get through, is adjournment. A motion for adjournment, please?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Ms. Nealon. And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hilstrom. And there's been a first and a second discussion? None? Excellent. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? We are adjourned at 7:38. And it's the same person.